Call to order, all rise for the pledge please. Okay, on the president's report, we have a couple of things. Ann and I and the mayor have been going to meetings on the EMS and actually it's going to include the fire company as well. For the, what they do is the DCED comes in and for no charge at all to the borough, they come in and they do a study to see what do we need for EMS services and what would be the best thing to do for fires. So they might recommend additional equipment, they might recommend a merger, they might recommend going out and subcontracting with UPMC or another company for advanced life support. So what we've done is we've asked them to come in and do that study for us and. So at that meeting, we have Peter Milan is going to be the consultant for EMS and John Sniff is the consultant for fire. How do you say?
John Sennett.
Sennett. Sennett is the consultant for fire. And I'll just read some of the highlights, but basically it's a lot of time. We need the fire and the other municipalities to cooperate, we need EMS to cooperate and the whole basis of it is that cooperation will dictate whether or not the study goes forward. So if they, there is, if they feel like there's no cooperation, they're not going to waste their time and money to go through with the study. So, does anyone have any questions about the DCED study, council or the public? And then Ann and I are going to also be attending a liaison meeting at Eureka Fire Company. The DCED study is not going to include people to the east of 83, right? But, so that's just something that we're trying to touch base with them, keep them informed of what we're doing. The other thing that we did was we did, and I want to say this in public too because this is an important thing, we've never had Stewartstown Eureka ambulance on our call blocks lists for emergency services and Ann and I got Eureka Fire, or Eureka ambulance services is now on BOS. We've talked to Rose Fire Company and they're in agreement with it. So that'll add as a fourth due, which means they would be called fourth because that's how they are in order of closeness or proximity to new freedom. So they would be called if needed for transport and emergency services. Do you want to give a, Donny's here tonight, Donny Mortner, and we have had a couple of water main breaks. Donny, I don't know if you want to speak to it at all, but Donny and his crew were out there for 13 hours on Oxford taking care of a water main break on Christmas Eve. So, go ahead.
Well, we had, what happened was a saddle came off of the main, so it caused us to call our guys to come in. Hate to have them call in on Christmas Eve, but people actually called the police that day. Actually, me and Jake were working that day, we had the half day. So the police called me and said these people said they kept hearing this noise. Well, they had a noise that sounded like you had like a radio on, you know, like the mic left open is going like this. It was inside their house. So I thought they had a leak in their house and here it was all the way out on the main. So I had to call the rest of the guys and they committed work and it took us a while trying to locate it because it's in a court and when you have a court, trying to find where they hooked the service in a court is like finding a needle in a haystack. So we unfortunately had to open up three different holes till we finally found, chasing it, till we finally found where the leak was and then we repaired it. So, but it was nice because, I mean, they had to spend Christmas Eve working, but we got it fixed and seemed like people there were really, they were really nice to us there in the court, you know, they were glad that we told them what was going on and got everything fixed and they kind of felt sorry for us because we were all so wrecked too.
How late were you there, Donny?
Uh, we finished up at one o'clock in the morning.
Wow.
And it was raining all day, correct?
Yes, yes.
That was a day of rain.
Yeah, so, yeah, then about a week later, we had another week on Old Farm Lane. So we got two leaks here fixed and hopefully it won't have any more for a while. And of course, we've had a couple incidents out here with the water main replacement also, either finding services we didn't know existed and they're digging and all of a sudden hit them or they just had an accident and we had to shut things down and repair and keep on going. So, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I was hoping Rec would be here by now. There's somebody to vote on and there's also a motion that the mayor suggested that we make to change the Rec council from a seven-member organization to a five-member organization. And this would allow them to have a quorum more often, you know, if one person was missing.
Their understanding of that is that it was a quorum of the number of people that were seated on the board, not the available number of seats.
Apparently that's not how it is in the resolution. So, just to keep everything legal, it would be nice to have, you know, have it set. And do we need a resolution number or?
Yeah, you have not had a reservation yet, don't.
Okay.
I can make a reservation right after you ask me.
Do we need a motion to?
To be the resolution.
Yeah.
Have we talked to them about it? I think, I don't think that they'll have a problem.
I think you did talk to them, right?
No, I don't think they'll have a problem because right now they're having a problem if somebody is not there.
I was just saying, have we?
Just like Thursday night, if I'd called in from Texas, we wouldn't have had to do that if their quorum was a lower number.
All right, I can wait, Marianne is coming to the meeting, so we can wait until.
I thought she was calling.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
I just ended up.
I don't think they'll have a problem with it, but I think that they should be at least informed of the idea or what we've found that in fact they do have to have a reduced number to in fact have a quorum.
I agree. Okay.
I'm sorry, Marianne is teaching the class, that's why she's going to be running late.
Okay, next item on the agenda then would be the consent agenda and we'll come back to Rec when maybe I guess when we get to committee reports.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as written.
I have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Any comment from the public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I have, I have one question, maybe the mayor can confirm this, two or nine can confirm it. Glen Rock did indeed vote and pass to use their healthcare rebate to pay the additional police cost for the budget for next year, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, I guess you were going to talk about that once we get to the committee meeting. I have it in my notes.
Anything else? My vote is aye, motion ayes. That brings us to public comment on items on the agenda. Okay, Mr. Mayor, would you like to start out the committee reports?
Certainly. First of all, as you all may know, the mayor is entitled to a grand total of $50 a year for his job. I would like to let you know that I will be donating last year and this year's $50 stipend to the New Freedom Fire Company EMS. My wife can buy my dinner out. Also, I'd like to let you know, please, anybody that lives down on Front Street or folks that are driving around town, we did have an incident, New Year's Eve, some kids down at the park setting off fireworks, major fireworks. Unfortunately, the police were at a domestic over in Glen Rock and could not get there and they did catch the field on fire. Fortunately, I watched them and they ran over their cars, got water bottles and put it out. But anybody in town, if you're driving through, you see fireworks, you're going to see it more in the summer, I think, or holidays, don't be afraid to call the police because as I said, that could have turned real nasty real quick. Another item that I have is I wanted to speak about the roads and new water mains. I know none of you get on Facebook, but people have been complaining. I would like, since we're videoing this and I hope people are watching, I would like to let you know that this is the water, new water mains, the street tear ups, the temporary patches that you're having to go through will be fixed. We appreciate your patience, we appreciate the fact that you're having to go over roads that are less than ideal, but I guarantee you that that will all be taken care of. We will have resurfacing done in the spring, but this is, this is very important that we get these water mains replaced. I think, Donny, you said some of them are probably, what, 50, 60 years old?
Yes.
And we're finding places that we didn't even know we had water mains. I don't know if any of you remember Franks, the old Franks down here, used to be a laundromat. Apparently they took off of the main, they took four lines off of that into that building and that's one of the problems that they had this week. I know, I apologize to some folks on Franklin, you had your water shut off. And it's a problem when you turn it back on because you've got air in the lines, we had several people, I had several people, probably about five or six calling at home wanting to know what's going on. They're turning on their faucets and it sounded like an earthquake, their house was gonna, but it's just air in the, air in the lines. I would recommend to folks, if you have that problem, please like open your bathtub, open a sink that doesn't have an aerator on it because some of that, you're going to get some brown, icky discharge whenever that happens and you don't want to plug up your aerators. Get the air out of the lines, wait for them to clear that brown water and even recommend taking your aerators off and make sure they're cleaned out. This brings up, but I, we all here appreciate your patience in, in working with us and the town to better it in the long run.
You should probably mention too that we've already signed the contract for the repaving in the spring.
Yes, and we got a good deal on that, I think. I believe what, the gas company is splitting that with the borough?
Nice.
So we're saving you a lot of taxpayer money by trying to do two things at once and then splitting that cost. Another thing I want to bring up, Tanya and I talked about that, I didn't bring it up to council. I would like council to consider, several years ago, the borough came in and pretty much made certain houses put in restrictor valves. Dennis, you're probably familiar with when that happened, I know.
Pressure reducing valves.
Don, yeah, pressure reducing valves. What happens under the circumstances that we've been having those pressure reducing valves get dirt in them? I couldn't take a shower in my house for two weeks and it was right before Christmas, that pressure reducing valve. We had a water main repair, brown water everywhere and apparently after that, that pressure reducing valve got clogged. So I couldn't flush my toilet and then wash my hands. I had to wait till the toilet filled up, didn't have enough water pressure to take a shower until last week when I finally got a plumber to come in. Over the holidays, it was a little tough. So my recommendation is, I talked to Donny Mortner, we do not have any more of those pressure reducing valves. I would like council to approve us having 10 or 15 of those on hand, that in cases of emergency, we can give those to residents that need them since they really didn't ask for it, the borough supplied it originally and now the borough can't come in and do plumbing repairs.
Is it still necessary, Donny?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because they're, they're put in because of the pressures in town. By building codes, you can't be higher than 75 pounds and like where I live over Broad Street, it's 85 pounds. So I have my pressure earlier, it said about 55 pounds. And that's sufficient enough for me, 55 pounds.
Yeah, but you get up 85, 90 pounds and what can happen is your hot water heater, I talked to one of the plumbers, the hot water heater gets such pressure that that core, if you call it a core, the coil in the middle?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It can actually collapse that core and you need a whole new hot water heater. So I just would like council to consider.
How many do we have out? We have.
What's, man, I think when we first put those out, it was close to like 300.
300?
Yeah.
I was made to get it, I was made to get it, so.
Yeah, we didn't have, we didn't have shorts. How much are they about?
I should have really checked on that.
They're like about maybe 60 to 70 bucks a piece.
Is there a lot of call, Don, for replacements? Has there been a lot of complaints?
I, I haven't replaced mine yet, but I know a lot of people have replaced them, that the springs and stuff in them go out and there's a rubber diaphragm that's in there too and that, I mean, they only last for so many years and then you've got to replace it, it's like everything else, but, but you have to have them, you know, because you don't want that higher pressure on your system because of your piping and everything in your house.
A lot of it was having the older piping and it's the copper pipes.
Right, and I mean, we've actually, when we first put those pressures up, we had people that had their toilets that kept on running and running and running because the old flush valves were too weak to hold, that's why you need to put the pressure reducing valves in. But not everybody in town has to have them because it all depends on where you're at. You know, the lower sections, you know, with the tank being so high, the pressures are higher, so.
Dennis, Steve, how do you feel about the borough replacing?
Well, I think the borough provided them originally, correct?
Yes.
And we didn't actually physically replace them, we provided them for the residents or that weren't.
No, Keith came in, Keith came in and put it in.
He installed it.
Who put it in?
Keith.
No, Keith never, Keith never put a pressure reducing valve in, I can tell you that.
Well, somebody from the borough put it in, it wasn't, it wasn't the plumber.
Yeah, it wasn't us though, because we didn't.
Most places, you know, that have, provide a component like that, whether it's a pressure reducing valve or something else, they usually provide those for the property owner, but the property owner's plumber puts them in. I mean, it's a, it's a joint effort and the borough provides the device and then the property owner can get the plumber to put it in. Most municipalities don't have their people going into houses and replacing things.
No, I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting that we have them available in case of an emergency. Like I had to wait two weeks over Christmas to get, had we had something here, I could have picked one up here, really put it in myself. It's not that hard to put it in.
Does anyone have a problem if we have like a 10%, a 10% stock would only be $2,100?
I think we should have that.
I mean.
Protects the people, I think we should have it.
I think I kind of view it as an item of the home and it's up to the homeowner to maintain.
I disagree because I was made to put it in.
So was I.
I didn't want to put it in. They kept after me, I kept getting a letter and I was made to put it in. And I felt at that time, if I was made to put that in, if something happens, the borough should be responsible.
But you have to keep in mind, you were made to put it in because they didn't want to damage your pipes.
That's right.
So, I mean, it was, it was protective.
What percentage of the New Freedom residents have that on their system?
I said about 300.
I'd say about a third of the town.
A third, right.
Yeah, I'd say about a third of the town has it. I mean, you get up to ones like people on Third Street, Broad Street.
Constitution.
Yeah, actually the engineers drew on a topo where we needed to have the people, that's how we did it.
I guess, I guess the big question is, it does go on the homeowner's side of the meter, right?
Oh yeah, it's on the homeowner's side, yeah.
So it would be by definition part of what the homeowner would be required, just like getting a new hot water heater or a new faucet if a faucet leaks or.
What we originally did was we sent everybody letters that was on the map that we saw that were the engineers recommended that they get it. And then we had them, that the people came in, they had to pick them up here at the office and then they had to schedule appointments for us to come out and make sure they put them in because back then, that's when Penmore opened up over here, we didn't want people just coming in and getting them and taking them for scrap over there and getting money back on them, you know what I mean? So they had to have, they had to come in, sign for it and then they had to call us to come out and inspect it, but it didn't cost them anything. They decided to take the town and pick them up and then have the plumber, except for the plumber to install it, the unit itself, the borough paid for.
If we wanted to do that, if we wanted to keep a number on stock, in stock for a plumber to put in or homeowner to put in, what I would ask is that if we provide them with the, with a device, they bring the old device in when it's taken out and take a look at it. I mean, maybe there's a warranty issue or something else with it and we'd like to take a look at it, but at least that we know it's been replaced also.
I had the plumber, I had the plumber give me mine back and it is so full of grit and dirt.
So we, I would ask if we, if we do this, that the homeowner brings the other one back in with us, with a reasonable amount of time, if they don't, we'll just go for the device that we, the device we have.
Any other discussion?
I'll make a motion that we purchase 30 to have on hand and with everything that has been said, make sure the homeowner then returns the old device.
That sounds reasonable.
And I second that.
I have a motion and a second to purchase basically 10% to hold in stock in case of an emergency situation. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pies?
Aye.
Doug Carries?
I think that's everything unless I have something to interject with the, with the police commission.
Do you want me to go over that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Gail was still working on closing out December's final numbers for last year's budget totals and as we said, Glen Rock agreed to use their rebate to pay for their remaining portion of their recommended PPUs. So they will have the 8.19 PPUs that was recommended for them. Gail noted that the first invoices for New Freedom, Shrewsbury and Stewartstown will have those healthcare rebates, the health insurance rebates deducted from their totals. All right, so that'll be, yours will be about $40,000 less. And it was requested that the boroughs pay their first bills as quickly as possible. From the chief's report, he discussed the December 21st armed robbery at the Rite Aid in Shrewsbury. The pharmacist was forced to open the safe at gunpoint and I believe maybe was doing it too slow and ended up getting hit on the head with the gun. One of our officers came.
I'm sorry, Donna, would you like the microphone?
Oh, can you hear me? I usually talk kind of loud. You can hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah, sorry, but, so, one of our officers came up with a suspect vehicle as it was fleeing down 83, followed it down to Baltimore City. Some problem, the radios kind of lose their capabilities as they go farther away, so I think he was using assault phone at that point. The car wrecked in the city and went into a pond. The suspects did get away, they were searching, I think MSP in Baltimore City helped search, but they do have the car and they recovered the money and the gun from the car. The FBI is taking over the investigation, they believe these suspects are responsible for about 20, 25 armed robberies. And then the only other thing was that they mentioned that due to COVID-19, they have not been able to conduct the training for that civil service commission that we're trying to bring back. Did I, did I miss anything that, did I leave? Is that a cover there?
Did you say you had something? Sorry, I was talking to the solicitor. Yeah, just to let you know, Stewartstown also voted to approve the budget as per, as per chief. That's, that's pretty much it. Our incidents in New Freedom over December were a little high, I think we had 65 incidents during December, hopefully now though, you know, what did, what did chief say they were doing their yearly shoplifting? That was a big thing, but no, I have, I have nothing else to really add other than, like I said, Stewartstown did approve and we're all in favor. That at least gives us our 75%, which we need to pass the budget.
Intergovernmental?
We are continuing to meet intergovernmental agreement. We are in the process right now of rewriting. I do want to be in touch with Bruce Merrill. He was at one of our meetings and he has some, some very good ideas that we want to entertain. Our big problem is right now, we, we tried to go through incidents, the number of incidents that a town or municipality had and base their payment upon that, those incidents. Unfortunately, that was really not going to work. We saw that, once we put a dollar figure to it, I think it lowered, it lowered New Freedom's about $40,000, but it raised Glen Rock's about $80,000 and we knew that was not going to happen. So we went back to the original 2017 IGA and used the chief's recommendation for how many PPUs he feels over a three-year period that each municipality needs. It was based on that, we're probably going to continue that, but we may, not may, we will change several articles that are incorporated within that. We're meeting twice a month. Once we get down to finalizing, we'll have each of the, each of the councils open that up for approval and take that back to the, the police commission for their final approval. If anybody wants to, wants to come to those meetings, please, you know, it's every other Tuesday of the month, when is it?
Thursday is Shrewsbury at 7:00 PM and Thursday is here.
Here at 6:00 PM.
And Peter Ruth is going to look over the IGA.
Yeah, Peter is going to look over the IGA. We've, we've gotten the police commission to approve 10, a maximum of 10 hours so that we can work diligently with the solicitor. So Peter Ruth will be assisting us with that so we can get that done as quickly and as diligently as possible. That's everything I have, thank you.
Senior Senator?
I, I think, you know, we just need to make a statement whether or not we're going to open the community center before our next meeting. I assume we are. before our next meeting. I assume we are not.
I can't see how we can. They're the at-risk population, our people.
At most. And as far as I know, no one who did that moving has gotten their vaccination yet, so. I'll just let them know the meeting is this Wednesday. I won't be able to be there, but I will go ahead and let them know that we will not open the center again.
The last I heard was the next round of vaccines were March.
Right.
So, yeah, so we're not going to get one until at least March.
As municipal officers, let me add two. Municipal government will be under the, what is it, 1C. I think teachers are 1B, who are supposed to get theirs shortly. And then, I guess, nobody knows where they're going to be coming in. Well, Span has given the vaccines out at a Hanover location. My daughter's a nurse over at the school and she just got hers a week ago and she's waiting to get her second one. Again, my son-in-law is in EMT and he's gotten his first one. Teachers are supposed to be next in line. When they get them in, then any municipal governments will be under that 1C rule, which we're hoping will be in about a week, maybe two. For now, Ryan, I guess you don't have to worry about it.
I'm like Superman now.
All right. Glad to have you back. Glad that you're feeling better.
Did you have anything for Rec concerning?
I guess we do need to make a motion about the new members, though.
Yeah. She's not here, though?
She is not here. She wasn't planning on coming in.
Oh, okay.
So all of her clearances and everything are.
Right, yeah. Everything is on.
But I'd like to make a motion that we accept Lisa Zepak as a member of the Rec Council.
Second.
Any other discussion?
So how many people we have then?
Five total. Yeah, at least.
So.
Five or four? That should be five.
Mary Ann, Chad.
Rick.
Eric. And Val.
Val.
Oh, Val's still there, okay. I thought she resigned.
That was a different one.
Okay.
Then you have a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pius? My vote is aye. We want to talk about changing the number to five so that they have a quorum, you know, have a full vote at this point?
Did Mary? No, that was somebody else.
You know, we could, just as a thought, we could say five to seven and then they would have five and the quorum would be three. And if they have six, you know.
I was going to say, they also do have a.
Five, two.
Tyler, are they mailing this or just giving it out?
A lot of it are being distributed by way of inspections.
Okay.
And we did mail to down here from the apartments to the Hanover office. I think they were going to distribute them also.
Okay. Yeah, Mary Ann and Tanya sat down and came up with a nice flyer for some new people in the community just about the parks that we have available. And they're also open, then maybe they'll get another member for the Rec Council. But actually, it ended up looking really nice.
Yeah, I got two phone calls about.
Excellent.
And so how, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. How are those being distributed?
We've actually gone out on inspections in the new properties. He's giving one.
Okay, all right.
And then we did mail to the Berkeley team's lease office and they're putting it in the whole lease package.
Great.
Where we had two phone calls.
We were talking about.
To know when the meetings were and stuff.
And then I believe they're mailing to Hamilton's overlook?
Yeah, if Rec approved, you mail to Hamilton.
They don't get over there, so.
We think.
It's not ours, but you know, they're going to use it
and if we can get some people interested.
Mary Ann, we were just talking about, should we change the ordinance for recreation to allow five to seven members so that with five, your quorum would be three?
That would be awesome.
And then that way you'd have an easier time of getting a quorum. You wouldn't have to be calling him all the time.
That would be great.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to change the ordinance to read five to seven.
I'd like to make the motion for adopting that for the range of five and seven members for the Rec Council.
All aye. Okay. Any further discussion?
In changing ordinance, we have to advertise it.
Yeah.
I'll pull the ordinance out and make some amendments. But also want to see if any of it is done by resolution before some of it may have been by resolution. Yeah.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Pius?
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Oh, wrong. Okay. City Rec Council, did I miss anyone who needed to make a report?
I have one question, Andy. I have a question from Donnie. I noticed I look at the water report and the average daily water use for December was about 10% higher than November. And I just wondered, many of those leaks that were fixed recently?
I think I had a lot to do with it.
Customers all the time. But it's a pretty good jump.
Yeah.
Three, four thousand gallon.
Yeah, I've taken notice the past two weeks since we have fixed those. It's not, our tanks are a little bit higher than, it's not taking as long to fill up. So we did have a, you know, a little bit of problems. This is, you know, trying to find something like that if people don't call or it doesn't surface, it's hard to.
Is the contractor who's putting in new water lines in, have they used any for flushing, et cetera, filling?
Um, yeah, well, we flushed Franklin Street and North Constitution already. But that didn't take too much to do that and flush it. I think those two leaks that we had probably took a toll right there.
And they've been working, they've been working pretty well. Contractor doing water.
Oh, yes, yes.
I think one thing with Mayor was talking about that, you know, one thing that ought to be mentioned too is we got more than our engineer estimated this much to do this water on replacement and asked the bid for this contractor came in way below, way below the estimate, which was good and thorough. All right.
One other question about that, with the stellar patch job they're doing. Is that going to damage any of the snowplow equipment?
No, not really. It's, everything's down low. It's, the only thing that might happen is some of those spots where the blacktop's sitting up a little bit, it might peel some of it off or chunk it off a little bit, but.
Kind of what I was.
Yeah, you're going to have that because it's just temporary patching they're doing.
That stuff traditionally just breaks off.
Yeah. I mean, we had, I don't know if you took.
The file might dig down and take a larger chunk of this cop coat off of it.
Yeah, if it does, we just have to patch it. I mean, that's just, unfortunately, that's the way it is and that kind of work like that. Till we get to the actual pavement done, then it'll be, you know, good. Actually, there was rain, so we had, I was surprised how much that rain took out. I don't know if you took notice, but down at the bank, there was a whole bunch of blacktop laying there at the bank and.
That's all something on Main Street.
Yeah, that was just, that's how much the water was flowing that pulled some of that blacktop out. And that was just water, you know. But they did clean it all up and patch everything, so everything was good.
Since we're talking about water, I have a question and I think I'd like to ask it in public. If we have a resident that is blatantly just wasting water, like they have cracked pipes or they have a problem with their property that the water is just pouring out into the soil, do we as a water provider have recourse to tell them that they have 30 days or some amount of time to fix their pipes or we're going to shut them off? And I'm hoping the answer is yes.
I don't know for certain the answer is that and though that they have to be paying their bills and it's their fault that it's leaking out, but I was always trying to figure that out.
Yeah, we kind of need to know that because, how many gallons?
Which time?
This time.
It's 627,000.
627,000 gallons of water. And that's affecting everybody here.
It does affect.
Means we have to buy.
627,000.
I'm sorry?
Six, two, seven, zero, two.
Six, yeah, 627,000, which affects the amount we have to buy from York Water Company, which pushes everyone's bill up, so I just don't, I don't think that.
As customer, in fact, I think even that was a kind of points required to try to get to repair the lines of the property.
And if we end up in a drought in the summertime, that's going to end up creating, could end up creating a significant impact.
Does it present a nuisance? I don't know where you're talking about.
It's on their own.
But if it freezes over and overflows the property, it freezes?
It would be.
Okay, all right. It's contained, but I mean, it's still wasted short.
Yeah, if you could get that, I mean, I really appreciate that.
Dennis, we also had a lot of water used up at that Veterans Park Fire and the hydrant. I mean, they were out there, what, five days trying to put that out? So we got a massive amount of water out of that hydrant.
Hope we sent somebody to go for that. It's really unnecessary. Not put the water, not put the fire on.
Well, we had talked about that.
I did send you to get your word back.
Mary Ann, we actually went through committee reports, but I feel free if you'd like to now. Is there anything you have?
I was just, I wrote something, but you changed the number of members, kind of. It was about the rules for the recreation council. And you were asking the members, kind of.
Fix that, okay, good.
Yeah. And then I just wanted to also say that we recognize the authority to expend municipal funds as a duty of council and that the Rec Council will make recommendations to council after research on cause, the programs and none of these. Because I don't know what happened with the playground exceeding.
Yeah, I don't either and I really don't want to point fingers or lay blame at anyone's feet. I mean, it's something that happened.
Right.
We have a beautiful park as a result of it. But I want to make sure that it can't happen again. I mean, that's really kind of where.
And the other thing I wanted to say is we are in support of getting a Rec director because we're all volunteers and we all work and, you know, we do the best we can. And I do think someone who solely is focused on, you know, coming up with Rec programs with us, you know, is a great idea. So anything from us to make that move forward, you know, we'll make sure.
And actually, you have another huge asset and. Okay, I'll do that. But your new borough manager coming in has a lot of experience in recreation.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
So that's going to, that'll be a big help too. So I think that'll be, it's going to be a great thing that's going to happen.
I think so. And then the last thing, and I just want to clarify this. So if an organization comes to Rec, and I'm going to use La Crosse as an example, and they say.
I'm sorry, going to use?
La Crosse, like.
Oh, okay.
Any La Crosse program comes to us and says that they want to use Mark Goodfellow Park to have practices or whatever, that I need to make sure the field's available. I need to make sure that we have a contract in place and that they're paying. But the approval comes from us. I don't have to come to you to get approval. Once I say, I just have to let you know.
As long as you check all the boxes, like they would also have, they would also have to have insurance.
And child abuse clearances. But I just want to make sure that those decisions are within Rec and then we just let you know as long as our.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay.
Does anyone have any? Yeah, I didn't mean to, that document doesn't mean that you don't have the right to.
Yeah, I just want to clarify because, you know, to me it wasn't clear, but, you know.
Okay.
It was the way I was reading it.
Okay. And obviously, if whoever's coming to you is a nonprofit, a community recreation organization, I mean, that's what, why we're all, you know.
Right, and I work closely with Tanya and I work closely with, closely with the person coming in, so, you know.
Right.
It will be no surprise.
Okay. With that being said, we do have the recreation thing that we passed out last time. And does anyone have any questions or comments on that?
I was just going to say, do you need a motion that they?
Yeah, yeah.
I hope everybody's had a chance to look at it. I'll make a motion then that we approve the revive.
Yeah, this is what I gave you the other day.
Okay.
I took the copy that I had, gave it to the Rec Council.
Okay.
I second it.
Second. Is there any other further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pius? My vote is aye. I accidentally, my printer stuck and I accidentally printed like 12 copies, so I can't have that problem. I'll keep a couple. Do you need a copy? Do you want to take a copy with you?
No, I have a copy.
Okay, all right. All right. The only other item that kind of falls under the solicitor is we were talking about drafting an ordinance for the property maintenance and picking that up as part of New Freedom's code. Has everyone had a chance to at least peruse the volume of?
This may be correct.
Right, that's just the ordinance.
Yes, yeah.
There was a book.
There's the address, like you see property.
Yeah, you got it. That's it. Guess it's not that bad.
It felt like that.
So I think we, you know, the next step is to have an ordinance advertised and so that we can put it into the books.
Compared to what we have currently versus this, how is it different? Like, in a nutshell, overall?
Well, I think it has. Go ahead.
It's just a nuisance.
Okay.
Yeah. That actually has some teeth and it actually lets you.
There are a lot more things.
It has exactly the ordinance. It's just a, it's just a.
Yeah, I noticed the dollar fee, which I think was different.
There's a lot more in the cave with that. The case is on six.
Yeah, this is.
Do we need a motion to?
Yes, we do.
So I'm there as to advertise.
To advertise, yes.
So I'll make a motion for the ordinance.
To be advertised, yes.
Yeah, advertised.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Pius? My vote is aye. Thank you. Okay. Now, we have any other new business?
You want to say anything about the ice sculptures?
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, that'd be good.
So I guess for the record, the, what is it, York County Economic People are doing the Ice Festival again this year and most of the sculptures are up at Revolution Stadium. But this year, they're going to put ice sculptures in all the railroad or the rail trail towns will be up. Seven Valley, Glen Rock, Shrewsbury. So on Wednesday morning, roughly 10 o'clock, we're going to get four sculptures here in town. One of them's going to be down at the park someplace by the sidewalk that goes into the playground. Another one will be at the Green. Another one will be at the Team in the History and the third one, the fourth one will be at the Cafe. They'll be up for, until next Tuesday. They're little hundred-pound things and they'll be lit all the time. And they'll look neat and everything like that and hopefully keep up the dead end.
Was the weather important, Dave?
Well, it ain't even cold, yeah.
Thank you, Dave. Anything else business-wise? Okay, that brings us to public comment on non agenda items.
My name is James Griffin. I own the former Lavotte Building at 1 East Franklin Street. My comments tonight have to do with a final land development plan, Phase 3, that. I understand Franklin Center has presented to the council and is asking the council to approve it. I prepared written comments, which I've distributed to council members and I've given most of the people in the audience a copy, but not everyone. If you came in after they started, you didn't get one. I've also distributed my comments to the residents on 1 East Franklin Street. In its present form, I would oppose the plan. In its present form, I would oppose the plan, and I would recommend that the council reject the plan. The plan, as presented to the council, has a number of errors on it. They're either typographical or calculation errors. I will point out to the council, well, my typed comments don't easily, don't well describe where it is I'm making reference to. But if you look on a map that's attached to this plan, there's something called a location map, which is in the upper right-hand corner. And if you read down from, look down from that, there are some spaces, and then there's a block with about seven lines of print. The third line, at the end of the third line up and at the beginning of the second line up, it says the following. GHI, job number one, seven, two, nine, four, zero. That's actually a misrepresentation. If you read the paragraph, it says this project, meaning phase three, has previously been approved by the council. And it turns out what the council previously approved was phase one and two of GHI's project. The project that is represented on this phase three plan is phase three. And that is prepared by, was prepared by a company called Warehouse. There's civil engineers there in York. I would suggest that before the council accept this plan, that that be amended and the words Warehouse and their project number be inserted in there. I now draw the attention of the council and the members to other aspects of this plan that I find are misrepresentations. Probably the greatest misrepresentation is, has to do with the proposed twenty additional apartment houses that Franklin Center proposes to build on top of the two previously proposed commercial buildings. Those twenty apartment buildings, at one point, nine apartment spaces per dwelling unit require thirty-eight additional parking spaces. I've looked at the plan very carefully. I've looked at how many parking spaces Franklin Center indicates that it is going to provide. I've looked at the plan to verify whether or not the parking spaces that they say they're going to provide in fact appear on the plan. I have verified that for the apartments, the three apartment buildings that are on the north end of the project, they need one hundred thirty-seven parking spaces. The plan indicates there are one hundred thirty-seven of them. I don't have a problem with those apartment buildings. For the townhouses, they have sixty-two townhouses shown on the plan at one point nine dwelling units per each. That requires one hundred eighteen parking spaces, and I have verified that there are in fact one hundred eighteen parking spaces provided for those townhouses. I personally do not have a problem with their townhouses. My problem has to do with the commercial buildings and the apartments that are proposed to be built on top of them. For the commercial buildings, the code requires fifty-six parking spaces, one parking space per two hundred square feet of proposed area. When I look at the plan, I see there are fourteen places in front of each commercial building, twenty-eight total. I see on the south end of the townhouses, there are additional fifteen parking spaces, forty-three total. And they need another thirteen more beyond that. Where the townhouses one through ten were proposed to be originally, they have provided twenty-two parking spaces. If you use thirteen of those, you have nine left. If you need thirty-eight and you only have nine on your drawing, you're twenty-nine parking space is short.
Yeah, one minute, sir.
At the bottom of the site data, they have a note which says twenty-one parking spaces are to be provided on adjacent land. It's not twenty-one, it's twenty-nine. I'll make another, point out another thing. In note number one, it indicates that no changes are proposed in the, what's called the NIPPA, that's Settlement Control Plans. It turns out, I spoke with the conservation people earlier today, and they indicated that the plans as presented in this phase three were considered by them to be a major revision. And as such, they need to review it and revise the permit that has been issued. I will also point out, the plan as submitted has not been approved by the New Freedom Borough Planning Commission, nor by the York County Planning Commission, and it would be my opinion that they need to review it. It would be my opinion that adding twenty additional apartment houses is a significant change from what you have previously proposed, what they have previously reviewed. As such, it's my suggestion.
That's your time. I'm not, I'm, we're not gonna.
I can't understand what you're saying, but I believe my time is up, and with that, I'll stop.
I have one question for Mr. Riffen. Did any of the people, the residents you talked to on Franklin Street, ask you what you can do to dilapidate a sort of building?
Did any of the people on one East Franklin Street do what?
Never mind, I'll tell.
I just couldn't understand you, that's all right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
May I make a phone call?
Sure.
Mr. Riffen, as the spouse of someone who sits on council.
I didn't get close to you because I have a hard, I have a hard time here.
As the spouse of someone who is on council, I would ask that you not come to my home during the dinner hour for borough business. They, they have a mail slot here, they have mailboxes there. Please don't come to my home for borough business.
Have I been to your home?
Yes, yes.
I don't know if you know who you are. Maybe Mr. Bobby?
We have you on film, it's okay.
I won't. He said, he indicated to me he'd rather not, I'd do that, and so I'll, I won't. And you'll notice I put, everyone will notice that the comments.
Is there any other public comment on any other non-agenda item?
Flip that, flip that out, switch on it.
I'll be real brief. Uh, can you hear me?
No, you, you gotta flip up the switch there on the side, all the way up to the top.
Uh, this, this concerns parking on one East Franklin Street. I'm Thomas Ritzel, I'm thirty-four, East Franklin Street. And I've owned it since nineteen ninety-eight. Now, the problem with that property is, unlike everything else on East Franklin Street, I can't park all street. And I'm requesting an easement apartment on thirty-six East Franklin Street. The alley terminates in his parking lot. All I want to be able to do is drive across his parking lot on my property. That's all I'm asking.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I don't want to use his parking lot. I just want to be able to cross it.
And who's?
I claim I'm the dominant estate.
I'm sorry, but whose parking lot do you want to drive across?
Thirty-six East Franklin Street.
Oh, I see.
Formerly known as the Bostick Building. On the other side, the old Peter Building, there's never room to do that. It couldn't be done. Because the building who's, oh, notice all the way back to is a property lot. But on him, he's got a parking lot back there, and I just want to be able to drive across that because the alley terminates at his parking lot. And it doesn't continue behind my hat.
You know who the property owner resents the reasons?
They slept guy hiding behind LLC.
The borough can't grant you an easement to a property that the borough doesn't own.
Have you, I'm sorry, let me just understand.
There's dominant estates all over the place, how's that?
I'm sorry?
Just, what about dominant estate? You have two privately owned properties, and one's a dominant estate because you can't access that estate without driving through the other estate.
Yeah, so that's, you either need to negotiate that with the, the property owner. So I, I follow what you're saying. So there's the dominant estate and the servient estate. So technically, if you are the one who's making use and benefiting from the easement, you're the dominant estate. The person who you, you'd be driving across their property would be the servient estate. The borough can't grant you an easement over land that the borough doesn't own. So you need to talk to the property owner neighboring you over whom property you'd like to be able to drive. The borough can't give you that access. You need to enter into an easement agreement with that property owner.
Have you tried to negotiate with them and say?
Why, why would you do that? Would you?
I'm sorry?
Nevermind.
I don't feel like we answered your question, but I mean, if you want to travel across someone else's property, you need to get their permission. And that's what the solicitor's trying to say? Or that's what she did say?
You actually said it, girl.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry, is there any other comment on any other items? No? Okay.
I have a question about this. Um, I was new on the council in January. I said we do open this, and I like everything done by the book. If I vote for something that is my name and that I sincerely believe that is the right vote, I do see some discrepancies in this paperwork. And for us to take this vote today without really knowing.
There's, there's not a vote on the table today.
There's no vote, okay. Because that, that is my request. My request is, as a dummy coming aboard in January, um, there are some problems with this property and with, with the licensing and so forth that troubles me. So I, my other question is.
If this has something to do with potential pending litigation, then that's something that has to be discussed in executive session, not at council.
Okay, it has to be in a se- separate session, so I can request.
Something that could be pending.
Well, let me ask you this, though. For these licenseings and things like this, shouldn't the council be the last people that, that get this information? Shouldn't it go like before the, the New Freedom Planning Commission?
What licensing are we talking about? Which one in particular?
Uh, for, for this lot number three.
Lot number three is in litigation and we've been.
It's in litigation.
We have been, we have been, we have been served papers that Mr. Riffken wants to sue the borough. And as Mr. Hobbis told us last week, we're not to discuss this in public. So we can, we can discuss it.
That was my question. That was my concern. That was my question. So you answered my question. I thank you.
Okay, sorry. Did you need an executive session to discuss something or you have a question on, or?
Well, I, I want to study it a little bit more.
Okay.
Is that okay? And then?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Then I would come to you and I would say, let's have a, let, you know, let's do that.
Yeah, that's fine, sure.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Hey, Andy.
Sorry.
Mr. President, sorry about that.
Oh, Andy's fine.
Yeah, I, you know, I think it might be a good idea, I mean, I don't know how much trouble it could be, but like have a meeting and invite everybody that lives on Franklin Street, you know what I mean? And then have them all get together and go over this and hear from them to see, you know, to sort of help us.
You can't discuss, if it's pending litigation, you can't have that discussion.
Oh, we can't have that?
No, not if there's litigation pending.
I mean, if, if you're concerned about the parking.
Yeah.
Then that's, that's something we're gonna talk about next, uh, probably at next month's meeting. We have all the information. We've gotten everything from everybody.
That was what was concerning me was, because some of the people on the street were upset because, I mean, when they heard that the parking was gonna get worse or had the possibility of getting worse, they were not exactly thrilled, you know?
Well, what, what, what purpose of, of this is, is to make sure that parking is not going to get worse. That's what.
All right.
Anything else? Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. I have a motion to adjourn. Take it to the sun. You all in favor?
Aye.